Back to call this meeting of the Monticello City Council order. Would you please rise, join me in signing the pledge of allegiance and remain standing as Reverend Kathy Sweet from Monticello United Methodist Church pleads a prayer? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and the right to speak.
Grace McGodge for decisions to be made this evening. We just ask that you would guide and lead all of our elected officials. Give them the wisdom that they need and help them to see what will benefit our community the most, for it is in Jesus's name that we pray. Amen.
Go ahead. Roll call, please.
Ms. Muse.
Here.
Ms. Stevens.
Here.
Mr. Clark.
Here.
Mr. Reed.
Here.
Ms. Vogt.
Here.
Mr. Brot.
Here.
Mr. Burris.
Mr. Coon.
Here.
We have a call.
Thank you. Public participation. No one signed up this evening. And if anyone on the remote?
No.
Thank you very much. That saves me reading all this stuff. Consent agenda. Approval of documents and action items is listed. Claims report. Claims dated July 26, 2022 through August 8, 2022. Meeting minutes. City council meeting minutes, July 25, 2022. Historic preservation commission meeting minutes, January 4, 2022. Historic preservation commission meeting minutes, April 5, 2022. Permit report, July 2022. And the fire report, July 2022. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
I'm moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any comments or questions of city staff before we proceed? Not hearing or seeing anyone. Roll call, please, Jill.
Ms. Muse.
Yes.
Ms. Stevens.
Yes.
Mr. Clark.
Yes.
Mr. Reed.
Yes.
Ms. Vogt.
Yes.
Mr. Brot.
Yes.
Mr. Coon.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Moving on to the mayor's report. There's lots of events this weekend. Irish Fest at Allerton Friday evening. Movie Saturday. Align a super jet Wednesday through Sunday out at Eli Field. If you are interested, and we encourage you to fill out the comprehensive plan, there's a link on the city website, cityofmonticello.net. Farmer's Market is on Thursday from 3 to 6. Bootcamp registration is going on. It's a reminder for all of you that pie meals are occurring in person at the Livingston Center Monday through Friday. Please call a day ahead to reserve a meal. 762-7733. The Monticello Summer Singers will be presenting their finale concert on Sunday, August 21st, PM at the Monticello United Methodist Church. It's a mixture of show tunes, folk songs, patriotic selections, and a salute to the armed forces. I'm sure you'll enjoy yourself if you come. Admission is free, and there's plenty of seating. Okay? New business. Residential waste hauler request for proposal discussion. Mr. Summers.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If you recall, during the June 27, 2022 city council meeting, the council approved a motion directing city administrator to draft a revised residential refuse and recycling collection program, request for proposals. That was draft, RFP, was provided to you Wednesday, and I think each of you should have a hard copy tonight in front of you if you want to take notes as I go over that. I thought I would just go over some of the highlights that we have talked about in the past and of recent days. So if you don't mind, I'm going to go over not all 20 some odd pages, but some pieces of most of it. I think, as you're all aware, the intent now, as always has been the intent is to offer the greatest amount of options for refuse and recycling at the best rate and most reliable service to the residents of Monticello and to reduce the number of trucks on the road. So with all of that said, this RFP tries to take into account the best interest of the residents, as I previously mentioned. So we'll just dive into it. You can stop me when you got a question, and we'll just kind of go through this bit by bit. Section 1A on page 4 talks about requests for proposals. It's a five-year initial contract beginning January 1, 2023 through December 31, 2027. Section 1C on same page 4, alternate proposals and other collection services. Those are outlined on pages 23 and 24, so I'll go over those when we get to page 23 and 24, if you don't mind. 1E on page 5. This is kind of the schedule of how this RFP will be conducted. So the public release of the RFP is tentatively slated for August 12. The pre-proposal meeting, which is mandatory for all the waste haulers wanting to submit, an RFP will be September 6. Proposals will be due in my office October 11. City council meeting recommending the contractor would be presented to the council November 14. And city council meeting awarding the contract, if you so desire, would be November 28. And the contract start date again would be January 1, 2023. 1H on page, beginning on page 5, is the basis for the selection. The contractor's plan to provide the city of Monticello with services as specified in that RFP. Contractor's experience in providing services similar to those described in the RFP. Contractors' references from other municipalities where they hold a light, a contract in. The contractor's financial proposal specified later in Exhibit B and Exhibit D. And any other factors relevant to the contractor's capacity and willingness to satisfy the city of Monticello. It's in bold there. The city of Monticello has the right to waive technicalities, modify, and reject any or all proposals. Moving on to section 2A and B on page 7, general description of services and exclusive contract. Contract for participating residents excludes, excuse me, multifamily service to buy a centralized dumpster, commercial properties, industrial properties, and institutional properties. The contract, the basis of the contract is going to be to serve those residents that desire to participate. This will, this RFP is solely as the contractor to do the billing. The city of Monticello, that's not an option in this RFP to do the billing. We know that last time we had about 2,300 residential meter, water meter pits, so we based that $2,300, 2,300 customers to the waste haulers at that time. We know there are business owners and employees that live here in the city that do not require residential waste hauling. They own a business here in town. They work at a business here in town that has a dumpster available to them, so that number has gone from 2,300 people to roughly 1,700 people. So we're demonstrating the number of participating residential homes that would participate. Section 2C and D on page 7, initial term of contract and renewal term. Again, initial five-year term with a three-year term extension possible. Adequate notice of six months before the end of the contract is required, and the city can solicit other bids in that timeframe at the end of the contract. Section 2E, page 8.
Did you say six months? What did you just say?
Yeah, six months.
Oh, yeah, I was just looking under 2C, and it saw 120 days, so I'm sorry.
So that's under 2D.
Thank you.
Yep. Section 2E, page 8, weekly, twice per month and monthly collection. This was implemented in the last RFP and continues with this one. Going back to trying to provide as many options to the resident. Some may need it every week, some may need it just once a month, so option that the waste hauler will have to provide. Note, I looked at the last RFP we did in 2018. We had four bidders on that RFP. Two of the four offered a cost savings for once a month compared to every week. The cost savings ranged from $1.50 per month to $5 per month savings. So two of them viewed it, I've got to go down your street every week, whether I'm picking yours up once a month or once a week, it doesn't matter, I'm driving down that street, gas, fuel, whatever. Two of them indicated they would give a cost savings. Section 2F on page 8, the price changes. Any changes in cost to the residents is identified ahead of time and contractual. So for instance, we have one hauler now. Everybody's aware of that, I believe. We have four licenses. We have one license occupied. And I just got a copy of an invoice from a resident. Right now, the waste hauling with recycle is $31.60 a month. There's a note on the bottom of it, very fine print. Due to increased costs, your next invoice may reflect a price increase. So we're kind of at their whim if they want to increase for whatever reason. 2G on page A, collection of charges. Again, it's specifically the collection of charges is solely and completely provided by the contractor. Section 3A on page 8, the program design. Recycling shall be collected on the same day as the refuse is collected and at the same frequency. So again, that's another option. I know last time, I think my family was included, our recycling bin was overflowing and garbage was half full. Garbage was every week and recycling every other week, just like it is now. So this program, if you are a large recycler, you have an option every week to get rid of your recycle. Section 3D on page 9, days of collection. One of the things that the city wanted to do is have one, one day that the waste hauler is in town. All the totes are put out the night before. They're collected on one day, and then they're put back into their homes kind of the same day. So if you drive around town now, you might see tote out five days of the week on depending which road you're on, which address. So we're giving them a one or a two-day collection proposal. Section 3H on page 10, holidays. Holidays are spelled out as New Year's Eve, Memorial Day, Independence Day, Thanksgiving, and Christmas. And service shall be delayed one day for weekday holiday and Saturday if a holiday is on a Friday. So that's self-explanatory to the waste hauler, what's expected of them if the holidays on, affects them. Section 3K, page 11, change in service. City has the right to make changes in the services provided at any time. Section 3L, same page 11, expiration process. That kind of spells out how this contract will expire on December 31. If the contractor does not, for any reason, any breach, we want to rebid it, whatever, for whatever reason. Section 3M on page 11, future development and annexations. The contractors agree. For any development or any annexations into the city, they will take on those customers if they so desire. Section 3N, page 12, no strike or employee shortage guarantee. I added the employee shortage guarantee with the no-strike clause. So the contractor needs to make every reasonable step to secure at its sole expense replacement employees and/or subcontractors to perform its obligations under this contract. Section 3O, page 12, disposal facilities. Obviously, we require disposal shall be made to IEPA permitted facilities only. Section 4C on page 12, additional refuse containers. So if the resident so desires an extra tote, they can get one free of charge. Section 4F on page 13, debris management, natural disaster cleanup. That's asking the contractor to work with the city on any sort of cleanup efforts would need to be made. Look at Eastern Kentucky right now with the flood and the debris. If you've seen that, any natural disaster like that, a tornado, you name it. Section 5C on page 14, minimum recycling materials to be collected. Sells out what the minimum recycling should be. I would point out, the contractor in this RFP, just like the last one, the contractor may divert recycling to a landfill for up to 180 days or longer based upon market conditions if approved by the city council. So that was kind of the outcry we were hearing in 18 and still kind of heard over the last couple of years. Some things just are not feasible to recycle, so you may be asked to divert those to landfill with council approval, obviously. Section 6A on page 15, resident requested special collections. The contractor shall offer special collection services to residents upon request. These services should be identified in Exhibit D. We can kind of go over that later on on page 23 or 24. And that's an agreement between the resident and the waste hauler. Section 60, page 16, the vacation interruptions, the infamous snowbird provision, if you will. So if a vacation, 30 days or more, those folks that vacation in Florida in a winter month, they can have a interruption in their service. Section 6D, page 16, exempt residential refuse. Again, this is what I spoke about earlier. Some residents have access to, legal access to a dumpster. If they have that legal access, they can be exempt from this program. Section 7, pages 16, 17, and 18, public awareness and customer service. This kind of spells out what is expected for the contractor in reporting, complaint response, so on and so forth, to provide to their customers, our residents here in Section 8B, F, and G, pages 18 through 20, general provisions. Section B, the penalties, penalties and default. The contractor must provide an irrevocable letter of credit in the amount of $500,000, and the city may take such steps to furnish services according to the contract. If the contractor's default and draw on that contractor's letter of credit, does everybody understand that? That's kind of the, kind of the fines and penalties of this RFP. Contractor has to have that letter of credit. Section C on page 19 talks about the insurance requirements. Those are already in place. Section 8L on page 21, non-assignment. The contractor shall not subcontract the work. And you want to jump to Exhibit B on page 23. That's the pricing proposal, so number of collection days, either one or two. The city prefers one day, so that will go, we'll look at that when we go through all the proposals we receive. One day is more favorable than two. Identify the collection days. And then you have the services kind of provided, 32 to 35 gallons, 64 to 65 gallons, 95 to 96 gallon totes. You have once a week, twice a month, and once a month options, and unit price year 1, 2, 3, 4, and 5. So those will all be filled out and presented with, they turn in their proposal. Exhibit C, the customer summary. That's what was reported to us in the years 2020 and 2021. Residential customers in 2020 were almost, little over 1,700, and 2021, 1,650. Exhibit D on page 24, that's the other collection services. I've kind of filled out, filled out some of the left column as far as examples. Backdoor collection, senior citizen discount, bulk collection, large and small appliances, push mower, power washer, chairs, tables, sofa, left seat, twin mattresses, other mattresses, sink, toilet, bathtub, cubic yard dumpsters, community e-waste. And the contractor should fill out anything and everything they would be willing to provide. And it's unit price. So that is the RFP that staff drafted in. Again, I kind of look at that schedule. These things kind of need to happen in this order for contractor to be able sit down with staff and go over the RFP. There will be questions. Can you guarantee me 1,700 residential units, customers? That was a big one from the last one. That is a sticking point with the contractors. Farmer City had indicated a certain number, and it was less than that certain number, and the contractor asked to renegotiate the contract. So I provided the data that waste haulers have provided us as far as those numbers I talked about a little bit ago. So that schedule really needs to be set in stone for the contractor to have time to present the proposal, get the letter of credit in place, so on and so forth. So that's all I have, and that's a down and dirty version of the RFP, similar to what we did in 2018 with just a few minor tweaks. We have any questions?
Terry, I have a question. So we have four licenses. One hauler is currently active, correct? Is that what you did? Has there been interest expressed in those open, those three licenses that are open now? Or what makes us think that there are other contractor interested in the service?
Good question. So there was one other hauler that had indicated they would be interested in a one-hauler system. There was one hauler, another hauler, that never responded to my request if there was any interest or not. And then there was one hauler that had indicated they might, they called and asked what the license, if I would send them what it takes to get a license in Monticello. So I sent them the information. I called them a couple of weeks ago. I called them Friday, and they do not have the means and will not be, will not be submitting a license to haul. That was the only one that, they were not interested in one contract for the whole city, and as of Friday, they weren't, they didn't have the means to even pick up a portion of Monticello.
I would assume, not to have an open discussion, but I assume that temperament's a lot different today than it was the last time we had this discussion. Surprised that I was to see in the paper that it was being talked about again. So I think it makes all the sense in the world.
Yeah, there, there's been a lot of turnover, turmoil in waste collection. We're all aware of that, and we've got four licenses, and only one's occupied, and we have, they can charge whatever they want to charge.
Anyone else?
Terry, this is Mike. I had a couple, one, kind of maybe a follow-up. Just wanted to remind that the, that the vote, the city council to pursue the RFP was done just if we need it. So, I mean, it sounds like you've done your due diligence on the potential to have licenses, so, you know, to have that report when the RFPs, you know, come, come, we decide on a contractor, just to have that information is good, I think, just so that we are continuing to at least look at that option, if that's even an option. But that, just reminder, that was the, that was the provision on the council approval on the previous meeting.
and as of Friday, they weren't, they didn't have the means to even pick up a portion of Monticello.
I would assume, not to have an open discussion, but I assume that the temperament's a lot different today than it was the last time we had this discussion. Surprised that I was to see it in the paper that it was being talked about again. So I think it makes all the sense in the world.
Yeah, there's been a lot of turnover, turmoil and waste collection. We're all aware of that and we've got four licenses and only one's occupied and we have, they can charge whatever they want to charge.
Anyone else?
Terry, this is Mike. I had a couple, one kind of maybe a follow-up. I just wanted to remind that the, that the vote, the city council to pursue the RFP was done just if we need it. So, I mean, it sounds like you've done your due diligence on the potential to have licenses. So, you know, to have that report when the RFPs, you know, come, come, we decide on a contractor, just to have that information is good. I think just so that we are continuing to at least look at that option if that's an option. But that, just reminder, that was the, that was the provision on the council approval on the previous meeting. The only other question I would have is just, and I trust your judgment on this, but the thought of having a three-year contract versus a five-year contract. So Terry, what do you have to say about that?
If the council so wants a three-year contract, we just did five-year contract in 2018. Five years seems to be kind of the norm for the initial contract from other communities. We could definitely, if the council wants to direct a three-year initial contract.
Well, you have better control, you have better control for two year, two more years than you would, would, you know, I mean, you can, you have control of what, what you approve for what the price increases and all, why would you want to go shorter than five?
That's perfectly fine. I just wanted to verify that. I'm okay with the five-year.
Anyone else? Terry, I appreciate all the effort that you put in putting this. I think we have good legs to stand on now. I think everyone has pretty good understanding of what's available and we understand our responsibilities and I think that's what's important. So thank you. You're welcome. Oh, I know what I'm going to do. Let me see. Alderman's report. Mike?
Nothing this evening.
Thank you. Mary?
Nothing this evening.
Wendell?
Nothing in particular, just to reach out to the Jim and the boys. I appreciate the training, the teams round the square. Much improved the looks of the buildings, named after part of the Dairy Queen and part of the clinic and a couple of other places to be developed to be a lot better. So I thank the efforts ahead. It was a hot job, but.
Someone had to do it.
Got it done in the days, somebody had to do it. Thank you, man. Other than that.
Thank you. Thomas?
Yeah, nothing, Mr. Mayor.
Ian?
Your report side, Mr. Mayor.
Nothing, Mr. Mayor.
Ashley?
Nothing this evening.
Very good. Police chief's report.
Nothing today, Mayor.
Thank you.
You know, I always have something.
Fire chief's report.
We're kind of busy in July, this past month. Starting with our training, we had Illinois Department of Labor, Bush and inspection prep our first week and I'll explain a little bit about that. We also did hose loading. Fire trucks, get their hose on their truck, they got to come off a certain way and they got to go back in a certain way. So we always train on how to remove the hose and put it back on so it can be done smoothly in an emergency situation. We did that. Also, OSHA and ISO require hazmat training every year. We did hazmat training this month. And then usually the third week of the month, we always do equipment maintenance or medical training, depending on what's available to us. So we go through our equipment, make sure things are good looking. Some of the things that happened this month, we had a medical inspection, we get that every year for car EMS, passed that, no problems with our EMS system. We were, we had a truck out at the movie night on Square. Try to do that so the kids are out, they can come by and say hi. Also, we had a surprise inspection from OSHA, Illinois Department of Labor. They're supposed to give us 24 hours in advance, but the guy was nice enough to let us know a week in advance, so we were, we were prepared. We had zero citations and usually I got a letter from him, I did. So the only thing we had was the door stuck in the, thank you to Brett, fix the door. We're good to go now, so it wasn't really anything fire related, but we got the building fixed and we're in good shape. So hopefully we shouldn't have that in a while. I know Northern Piatt had an inspection tonight and nobody else in the area has had an inspection, so why they picked us, I'm not really sure, but super nice guy. He just wanted to make sure everything was safe. Went through all our records, we had all the appropriate records, we're doing all the appropriate training, we're doing all the appropriate inspections, so that went well. This month, we also filled water tanks, heat like field for all the different events out there, put about 5,000 gallons out there. Did hose testing this year or this month, we do that yearly, that's required by OSHA and by PIAS though. Basically, what it does is we try to take all our hose trucks, run 250 PSI through the hose for three minutes and make sure nothing's leaking. That's always happens a lot of times, we pin holes and the leaks on different parts of the hose, we got to take it out of service. So we have about 10,000 feet of hose, went through that, it was a pretty long day. So we got that done. We also went to the back-to-school event that Kirby Medical Center had at the end of the month, what else we need. Couple interesting calls we had last month, we were on that, that barn fire between Monticello and Dland. I think it's still burning because people say they still go by there, still see it smoldering, so it was a pretty large barn fire. We also had a CPR assist for unconscious patient. We assisted Mussel Police, High County Sheriff and the Kirby Avenue Patrol. We did revive the resident and we got her to the hospital and she's, the police is doing well, so we don't get those safes too often, but I thought it was pretty special. As you see, we all worked on the team and worked out well for this person.
Very good.
That's, that's all I had from the department.
Any questions, Chief? John? Thanks, John. Well done. Okay, city administrators' report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I'm watching.
I know. I'd like to commend Chief Repke and Cole Hunt was, I joined the OSHA inspection for a little while that morning and it's kind of nervous when somebody comes in and inspects your stuff. But I would commend Chief Repke and all the volunteer firefighters because, I mean, this guy went through every, every door, every drawer, every opening on every piece of equipment over there. Everything was in place. So job well done.
Thank you for letting us get that equipment too, because certainly we need and you guys, thank you. We're slowly but surely getting where we need to be and it costs money, so thank you for that.
Yep, yep. I looked on the, one more thing on garbage hauling and then I'll wrap it up. I looked back at 2018 when we did the last RFP. And if you recall, the invoice, the latest invoice for a resident was $31.60. If we would have done, and so you might, if a resident comes up and asks you why one hauler, what's in it for me? The price the resident would be paying today for once a week, garbage and recycling, $14.21. If they did it monthly, this was one of the contractors that gave a discount on frequent, frequency. They'd be paying for recycling and garbage collection monthly, $12.64. So the resident would have witnessed a pretty substantial cost savings. That's all I have.
Thank you. I need a motion to go into closed session to discuss real estate purchase or lease by, under Illinois 5IL CS 120 slash 2C5.
So moved.
Is there a second? Thank you. I have a roll call, please.
Ms. Muse?
Here.
Ms. Stevens?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Reed?
Yes.
And Mr. Kent?
Before you shut the door, I want to remind everyone that we are not going to, there'll be no action taken at the end of the. There being no further action this evening. There being no further action to be taken this evening, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Opposed in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Do you in two weeks?